Seven o'clock, the panel. Select board meeting for March 12th, Thursday. Tonight's agenda is board reorganization for chair, vice chair, board clerk. Paper of records. Authorization to sign warrants in event there's no board meeting scheduled. Select board standing rules of order. Meeting agenda and policy. Warrants. Mail. Old business. Town office project update. Award excavation bid. Award move the schoolhouse structure bid. New business. Spark grant information. Road forming RE gravel stone crushing bid from Joel. Treasury. The bank statement fees. And Green Mountain Racetrack property. Public comment and executive session for personnel if necessary. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Want to go with the next part?
Sure. Why not? So, board reorganization. I guess first we'll talk about chairman and then just work down the list. If I could open it up, I would like to nominate Angie for chair. And I'm gonna build you up a little bit here.
Oh, boy.
You've been on the school board for many years. You've served panel pretty proudly. And in the times that I've seen you in these meetings, you're no-nonsense. You take control. And I think you know open meeting law very well and you know process and procedure very well. I think you keep these board meetings running smoothly.
Thank you.
Do you accept that nomination?
Yes, with help.
No, I don't.
Any second.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Any other interests?
I think discussion would be the next one.
Okay. I think under nominations, you gotta announce it three times.
Oh, maybe.
To see if there's any other nominations.
Yeah, any other nominations.
Discussion?
I second it, all right.
Yep. There's no other nominations, so take it both.
Oh, I guess I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None. And then, so vice chair next?
No, Angie's gonna take over now.
Oh, that's right. I get to be quiet now. All right.
Angie's gonna take over.
Okay. Nomination for vice chair. Anybody? I nominate Mike for vice chair.
Second that.
I'll accept.
Any nominations for vice chair? Vice chair?
Well, I was gonna nominate Harry, but if you're seconding him, I think that's your choice.
That's what I think. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Nomination for board clerk. This is usually taking over Linda's job and doing minutes and public notice and requirements, correct?
When necessary.
When necessary, yep. If you're not here.
I nominate Harry. He's doing such a good job.
I'll second that.
Harry secretly swearing right now.
Any other nominations for board clerk? Nominations for board clerk? Vote. Eyes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Paper of record?
Linda, right?
We don't have a choice.
That's so funny. You're so funny.
Who did you have last time? The banner?
Bennington banner.
We don't have a choice.
Any other options?
Linda posted at the store.
They're all owned by the same company, so I'll take it there.
Any nominations? I guess the Bennington banner.
Who's move?
I'll make a motion to the Bennington banner.
Second that.
Any other motion? No other paper? No discussion?
Nope.
We don't have any other options.
I don't think so.
Not really.
Not locally.
So.
Wall Street Journal.
Call the vote, please.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All in favor.
One of the things, okay. The eyes have it. Authorization to sign warrants in event of no board meeting?
So, who's most available during the day to come down to the town office?
It's usually the vice, the chair and the vice chair or.
And/or the vice chair. Okay. So, I nominate the chair and the vice chair for authorization and sign warrants in the event of no board meeting.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Does it have to be both or is it one or the other?
One or the other.
Just to be clear, that's all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
If you have, for whatever reason, just send me a text and I can zip down after work if you guys aren't in town or whatever.
I'm usually always around as long as I'm like, pretty much, right?
Pretty much.
We have boring lives.
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Is that all the dogs come?
Select board standing rules of order. Do we have a list of that somewhere?
Yeah, I saw a list in here.
So, should I read it?
Well, if you haven't read it, that's what we were operating.
Do you want me to read to the public? Has everybody agreed with this? Has everybody read this?
Has everybody read the?
The purpose of the select board?
And understand.
And understand it.
These are rules.
Yeah. I'll just rule that.
I have way too many papers in front of me.
Wait till about six months in and things like that thick.
All right. The rules. The meetings will run in an orderly and professional manner. Control will be kept at all times. Those found out of order will be removed. The agenda will be presented in the following manner and voted on by the board. The name of the items and individuals wishing to speak on the item will be listed. Items not having a speaker will also be noted. Items may be tabled or removed from the agenda. Some items may be scheduled for another meeting. Board may limit meeting length by majority vote of the board. A member of the public which harasses other or disrupts the meeting will be warned and removed if their activities continue.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
The only thing I'd like is to add a hard stop at nine unless a majority vote, we want to continue depending on what we're discussing that evening.
I agree with that. I'll second that.
I'll third that.
A mental motion.
So, we need to amend your motion to accept? Who was the one that accepted?
I'll accept the amendment to the motion for a hard stop at nine o'clock. I made the motion, so.
And I'll second the amendment.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Meeting agenda policy? That was what we just did? All right. Warrants?
Okay.
Help me out with that. Where'd they go?
This is right here. You read the date and the amounts and then we'll do it. She read them all off and then we can take and do the motion to.
We can run warrants right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, warrants.
So, read them all off.
Yep, just read them off.
Do the.
Then we're gonna do one motion.
Okay. Two twenty-three for nine thousand five sixty-seven twenty-one. Three-two for nine thousand three ninety-two eighty-five. Three-eight, nine thousand one oh four fifty-nine. Two twenty-eight, forty-one thousand five hundred nineteen sixty. Three-six, ninety-six thousand one hundred and eight eighty-three. Three-seven, four thousand two thirty-three twenty-seven. Three-thirteen, twenty-four thousand four sixty-eight twenty-three.
Motion that we approve the warrants as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
You abstain?
Mm-hmm. Only because we weren't on the board. I was not on the board for some of those warrants.
Okay.
No other reason.
Eyes have it. All right. We have approval of a liquor license for the Dollar General.
Make a motion to approve Dollar General's application for liquor license.
I'll second.
Any discussion? So, renewal? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
Can we make sure that it gets signed?
Wanted all for it, all of us.
Everybody.
Camp Precast Concrete Product and Company, waiting for approval. Darney Brothers Construction. New England Quality Service and Company. RK Miles. Riggs Distiller and Williams Lonsberry.
Weight permit.
Those are overweight permits.
All overweight permits, yeah.
They've all been approved by a road boss?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
A motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Opposed? Abstentions? The eyes have it. And this is?
That meeting was canceled.
That meeting was canceled, okay.
She signed that for everybody.
I think he still would like.
Us to read it?
Everybody has a copy in their packet.
Yeah.
Please to get home and if you have any thoughts on it, respond in some way and we'll get information to Walter so that he'll know what the board's thoughts are for whenever the next meeting gets scheduled, if it does.
Okay. All right. This is for the BCRC delegate.
Yes. He represents panel.
Yeah. So, this has.
Right. Just one signature on the overweight permits, right?
They only need to be signed by Joel.
Okay.
But approved by the board, so that's all set. There's nothing else to sign.
Excellent.
Yep. Just put it all back in the mail and then we have it all.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. All right. Old business. Town office project update.
Pauline?
Pauline? Shall I just sit right here? Why not? Okay. So, about two weeks ago, the Development Review Board met and walked around the new town hall site, followed by a later meeting to review permit requirements. Primarily, the DRB requested an engineered site plan to be done to include elevation contours, parking areas, traffic flow, sidewalk and path plans, lighting, drainage and landscaping. To accomplish such, a survey is required. Yesterday, the property was surveyed. The completed site plan will be submitted to the DRB on Monday, March 23rd at a 6:30 meeting, and I hope they have it. Permitting is also ongoing for Vermont's Rutland Fire Safety Division. A stamped engineering plan for the foundation will be completed and submitted within two weeks. The foundation plan includes a six-hour fire-rated vault. Cost for this plan and the site plan together are approximately eighty-five to a hundred dollars and is covered by funds from panel's town hall contingency fund. Our municipal fund?
Yep.
Okay. Our new town hall will have ample closed parking available for daily use for select board meetings and for other board meetings. Nonetheless, an important objective for our new town hall is the use of the building for town-wide voting, even though town-wide voting typically only occurs once or maybe twice a year. As a guide, I counted the number of parked cars during the busiest time of our recent town-wide voting held at the panel firehouse. That number was fifty-seven. The fifty-seven cars included those parked in the firehouse parking lot as well as along both sides of the North Panel Road. Our new proposed plan will accommodate sixty-three-plus cars, some in overflowing parking areas. That's pretty much what I have.
Thank you.
All right. Award evacuation, not evacuation, excavation bids? We don't have that in front of us?
No. Is there gonna be some discussion on that?
So, well, I'm wondering, do we award the bids now or do we award them after the site plan?
I'd like to know, do we have all the permits? Have we awarded bids if we don't have permits?
I agree with that. And I think, how can you? I think all of your bids, your excavation bids, were put out before you have, obviously, a site plan in place, the engineered site plan.
I don't see why it makes any difference at all.
You didn't, you don't, with the property, they didn't even know, you don't even know where the survey pins are, right? The property line?
We know exactly where the town hall is going to be.
Right.
And anybody that was interested, walked the site.
Right. Well, my question, I guess my other question is, in your new site plan, you have drainage now in that site plan. The drainage could potentially change compared to what it was.
Not really.
When they did, when they did, sure again.
Well, no, because we're going to be doing footing drains. The drains are gonna go to daylight.
Somewhere, but we don't know where that is.
Yeah, we do. We have a really good idea and where it goes. And the state came down, the Department of Transportation, and there's no issue at all whatsoever with our drainage. So, why not award the bid? And, I mean, we already awarded the bid for the moving, the structure.
That's a next.
That's not awarded yet. Nobody has awarded anything. The board of selectmen do the awarding of the bids.
Well, I thought you did, the board did do that.
No, there's no motion. There's been no formal motion to accept any bids.
We haven't done that yet.
Okay.
When you're spending town funds, the board has to be the, the legislative body has to be the ones to award these bids.
Okay. I understand that. I just thought that particular one was awarded.
No, it is, no. There has been no formal motion.
Okay. Well, that's my opinion. I don't see why it can't be awarded. There's nothing much that's going to change.
Because we have to follow rules and regulations and.
Well, where's the rule?
The DRB could ask for additional information. They could ask for changes which could change the scope of the work that's gonna be performed, which could drastically increase the cost.
And there's nothing in writing, correct?
There.
For like the drainage and the property and all that.
Yeah. The specifications were there.
But it's not, we don't even have an engineered site plan at this time.
No, we don't.
So, what we had, the site plan, the site plan that we would be awarding.
It's a plot plan.
A bid based on what we have as a site plan, as the board of selectmen in front of us right now, which I've seen, most of us have seen, we're gonna award a bid on, based on that? Is that what we're?
We gotta wait for the engineered permits.
Yes.
And I don't think there's any issue with waiting for the site plan, right?
Right.
No.
The work can't happen until you get permits.
Right. Exactly.
Until the permits are in place.
So, I think we, I think we're bound by it, right? We have to go in sequence. We have to get the site plan first and then we have to go to the, and then we have to, and then we'll award, and then we'll talk about the award for both the excavation and the schoolhouse structure move.
But we don't have to rebid those two, those two.
No, we don't have to rebid.
No, no.
All right. That's fine.
No, we just, you just need to be in sequence, that's all. And then, and again, it's the risk of any changes, but you eliminate that risk by having the site plan first. So, what else do I want to ask about that?
I guess one thing that I did notice when I was looking at the moving bid, the total amount for the bid was twenty-two, five hundred. And then it's noted at the bottom that work by others. And one of it, one of it is that this person that bid expects someone else to get any permits that are needed.
Well, we only need, as far as I know, one permit, and that's me and Joel. And that's, what do we call that?
The access weight.
That heavy.
Access weight.
I just want the board to know that there's work that was expected to be done by others, such as cleaning the basement out.
Oh, yeah.
Removing the chimney, get all the permits needed, take care of the utilities, power, phone, et cetera, all traffic control needed, just for new board members coming in into this, that there were things that were noted that were extras.
Right.
So, we're.
How were they going to be covered, the cost for any of these to be covered?
Well, first of all, we've already gotten rid of the tanks that were down there. We need to get rid of the chimney, and I actually think I have a volunteer for the chimney. And we do have to get rid of the, some dry wallets down there. And so, I was going to try and get ahold of the kids that work up at the school.
CDC.
Yeah. And try and see if they could come down and do it. I'm trying to get volunteers for that.
I just wanted the board to be aware.
And so, it'd be fair to say that.
That there was gonna be extra costs.
Yeah.
It'd be fair to say that for the extra cost, for the extra items that aren't covered, you'll come back with a plan that covers those items.
Right.
It'll either be volunteer or some cost.
Right. And I have contacted.
Or some combination.
Utility companies. I have to do it again because it was quite a while ago, but yeah. And so, and as far as traffic control, I haven't gotten that far yet, but I presume that our constable can probably help us.
They don't have a constable.
We don't have a constable at all?
No.
Okay. So, maybe we can get that.
The town contracts with the sheriff's.
Oh, the sheriff's department. Okay. So, and maybe somebody, I don't know if, how the select board wishes that to be handled. If you want me to call, I can do that when the time comes and so forth.
Gotta get the permits in place.
Yes. I think we should table this.
That'll state the.
Right. Until you get all your ducks in the rows, so we can look at it and.
It's premature, right?
It is very premature.
So, we're talking about moving the building now at this point? We're done with the excavation bid? Now we're talking, right?
Right. Yeah, we're.
I talked with Leo today, our health officer, okay?
I was gonna ask that.
About moving the building. There's a major glitch, in my opinion, and that's all it is, in moving the building. Is your mover that has a bid certified in lead paint, dealing with lead paint?
I don't know.
Because that's going to, according to our health officer today, that becomes a federally guideline situation because it's a commercial move, not a residential. And he couldn't be here tonight. He's up north doing a coronavirus thing. So, I don't have a whole bunch of information on that, but from what he's telling me, whoever moves the schoolhouse has to be certified in dealing with lead paint.
Well, I'd like to check that out because it does not seem plausible to me. First of all, the lead paint can be encapsulated. There're not gonna be little children in there, and there's only lead paint.
It's on the old building.
Well, the exterior of the building, we're using the sheathing, or the exterior siding is sheathing, so it's not going to be, we don't have to worry about that. That's not a concern. We're encapsulating it.
Just reach out to them and ask them if they're certified in lead paint. That's all you gotta do.
Okay.
Did the historic, historical society ever have the building tested at all?
Oh, sure.
As far as air quality and that type of stuff?
Yes.
And did they have the results that they can take and share with the board?
I have them all.
Okay. Cause that'll take and answer a lot of the questions for us.
You guys move buildings for a living? I'm sure they're all paint certified. You don't move an old building in non. No, I agree.
We'd like to see that.
No, exactly. That's what it is. So, tell me, just call them. I'm sure they'll have no problem faxing that information.
Just like, I'm sure they're especially certified to make sure.
But that was just a conversation that we had today. We were talking about zoning from it, actually, and then that came up, so. That had been mentioned at the last DRB meeting.
As long as it's not loose and in a dusty or frangible setting, then there should not be an issue because then it's encapsulated under paint or newer type of stuff. But we just gotta cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Exactly.
And maybe taking a step backwards, just make sure we're communicating the date to the DRB on when the site plan's gonna be ready, just to make sure that they're okay with it, because I think the requirement is actually that it's in advance.
Two weeks in advance.
And I just wanna make sure that they're, that they're okay with, that it, I think it's, I think there's some subjectivity to it, though, right?
What do you mean?
I mean that the DRB can, not must, require that it's two weeks in advance, so if I understand it correctly. So, just make sure that you're okay with getting it same day or getting it just before the meeting.
Oh, the site, the.
The site plan, the engineers.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
And as of right now, I think that's what they said at the last meeting.
Yeah, they did.
I mean, they actually offered to take and give us a little more time. Pauline feels that they're.
Yeah, I was.
People can get her done, so.
Yeah. That's what I was told, that it'll be done on the 23rd, so that's what we'll get it.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion? So, we're gonna table that until all the ducks are in the row?
Yep.
All right. New business? Spark grant?
I talked to Shannon from the EDC tonight. She was gonna be here and she can't. can't, um, she's gonna withdraw that at this time.
Okay.
Withdraw.
Can we just go back one step? Pauline was also requesting the board, um, asked me to, uh, bid the foundation.
Oh, okay, cause that's not on there, sorry.
Do we wanna continue? If I was going to do that, I was going to do that tomorrow.
But, do you have the final foundation plans?
I, I will have them.
Okay, well, we can't bid them until we got the final plans for it. As far as what we, what three, what we're asking them to take and do, so.
By the time.
So we have to table it.
By the time this gets, well, if it's, if you put it in the paper, if you, when would, when it would actually come out in the paper?
When I ask for it.
So, it could be, or it could be Monday. Right?
Potentially.
Okay, then, why don't I check with you and I'll tell you exactly when, uh, I'll have those plans in my hand?
No. But what, but what concerns me is excavation commences approximately four-twenty. I, I think it's.
I know that's pushing it, but.
It's hard, it's hard to put these bids out with these permits not in place and, and other things not complete in order.
So hold off on bidding until you get your permits.
Absolutely.
So I think that all three things.
There's just some things with the project that are out of order.
Well, the only.
It's procedure, I know you wanna go out of order, but we gotta play by the rules for the greatest chance of success.
Yeah, the only thing is, I'm thinking is if we could get someone, well, it's all right, but I, okay, go ahead.
I mean, my personal opinion on this is I don't see how we can put any of it out to bid until we have all the permits in place, including the ones from the state.
I agree a hundred percent.
Because, because we're, if the state denies all the permits and we have to go back to the drawing board, we've spent money on, on bids and everything else that, that we have to start all over again. So my personal opinion, as a select board member now, is to wait until we have all the permits in place and then go ahead and start the project, when we have the permits in place.
Absolutely.
State and permits, whatever we need, all of them, and then go from there. And I'll make that a motion.
Alan?
I just wanted to say, um, also with going to bid now, you're putting, people go to bid and, and write their bids to the town of Palinol when they're available, so if they're, if you say somewhere around this date, they're gonna bid it, we're gonna award it to them, and then we're not gonna need them for three months. Well, in three months, they've already lined up their next job, now they're not available.
Absolutely.
So it's gonna cost more money.
Yeah.
And we definitely, we're, we're still waiting for other funds, we only have X amount of dollars in the municipal office fund.
Right.
Yep.
Everything hasn't lined up, we haven't, we have no bond.
We can't do the bond until we get all the.
Everything else done, so, so.
And that's, that's why I'm saying we gotta get the bond done.
We have X amount of dollars, and I can tell you right now that the, the general fund cannot carry.
Right.
The project until we go to bond.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'll also add to this, there, the bond can only be applied for two times a year, spring and winter.
Yeah.
And we, Ellen and I should be working on the bond application anytime now, which we can't because of, we don't have our audit finished and we don't have permitting in place, and therefore we can't do anything, and I don't believe that we're gonna make it on time. So, we will try for the fall.
However, my understanding from talking to the bond people, you can do a carryover loan because this, most towns can't commit to that twice a year, so that's why they have that carryover. And then when, and then you just fall, get the bond when it becomes at whatever it is, January.
I don't believe that we'll be doing that.
No, we can't do that. Why? That's the way they typically do it.
Not from a municipality.
Not from a municipality, no. Yeah, they do, I brought it, I talked to them up there. We've all decided that we need permits, so could you please? No, it isn't about the permit, it's about the bond. And, and, in other words, if we get all the permits, say we have all the permits by.
Please stop trying to argue with the board.
I'm not, okay.
I made a motion.
And your three minutes, your three minutes are up, so Mike made the motion, could you repeat the motion, please? I'm sorry.
Ronnie seconded.
I, the motion, if I remember correctly, was, um.
I think you were tabling all the bids.
Tabling all the bids until, exactly.
Till all the permits are in place.
State, state and local permits.
Ronnie seconded.
I seconded.
We already had our discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. We're moving on to road foreman gravel stone crushing bid.
Joel.
Come on, Joel, Joel.
Okay. You can sit there.
Oh, oh, oh my gosh, don't fall, you okay?
Are you sure you want that one?
No, not for me.
We're gonna put the gravel out to bid, gravel bid. So.
Crushing?
Crushing, yes. Um, we have twenty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars in the fund. Um, if we put out what I have here, five thousand yards of gravel and a thousand yards of stone, we're not gonna have enough in the fund. So, in the gravel, sand and riprap purchase line, we have about thirty thousand dollars left, actually it shows sixty-six, I don't know if you guys have a copy of this latest, but it shows sixty-six minus thirty-six, so we have thirty thousand in it. So if I run over, is it okay to take it out of that line? Because basically it's the same thing.
That was put in there before we, as a contingency, if we had to purchase some.
Well, we, we do, actually.
We'll page that, I think.
That's right on the first page of the general ledger.
Yeah, we wanna go to two hundred under expenditures. Now go to the two hundred, keep support this.
I know I got it in here.
Okay. Back up one page. I think I did two, go one page. It should be right there. Gravel.
See gravel and sand.
So it's gonna be page seven of your expenditure report.
Page seven fifteen.
This year, actually, our new budget, what I did was took ten thousand dollars out of that line and put it back up into the crushing fund.
Yep.
So we had enough, I, I don't know why that got changed, um.
I remember we discussed that.
Previously, we spent thirty-three thousand, uh, the year before, the last couple of years actually, um, and we ended up with twenty-five for some reason.
So you have twenty-five thousand dollars in your crushing?
Well, I actually have twenty-eight thousand nine hundred.
Right.
And the fund balance sheet.
Okay, okay. So you have, you have twenty-nine in there now?
Yeah, twenty-eight nine ninety-five, might as well say.
Might as well say twenty-nine thousand. Okay. I like round numbers.
It's probably gonna cost, um, round thirty-three. I don't know how the bids are gonna come in, you know what I mean? They could come in lower than last year. So I just wanted to know, you know, if, if it's all right with you guys being a new board, Madam Chairman? If, if it's all right to take it out of the gravel, sand and riprap purchase, um, because we'll have, we're gonna have a surplus left over in that anyhow.
That's common practice, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm okay with that. We need a motion?
You got a motion for that, or?
I make the motion. For the gravel for thirty-three, up to thirty-three thousand, right?
Well, whatever, the bid, you'll see the bid anyhow when they come in, I don't know if you guys have a copy of that, that's what I'm gonna.
Yeah, I just couldn't find it real quick.
That's what I'm gonna put out.
I might either.
We're not gonna do a budget adjustment or anything at this point, it's just, we're gonna take it from two separate accounts lines when the bill comes in.
All right.
But I just, you know, sometimes board members have different ideas, but to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
You, you made the motion.
I made the motion.
I'll second that.
I second it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Ayes have it? Thank you, Joel.
Any questions for me, well, right here, Rob?
I ain't got any questions, so we see, uh, see how much it costs. Maybe we'll wanna get more, if we got any money left.
We're gonna save up questions for you here.
People don't steal gravel, gravel will stay in the file.
But, we're, we're, we're limited to ten, ten thousand a year.
The treasurer's sitting over there and I see your name, and I'm like, hey, this is legal, that's all I care about.
Yep.
We're good to go.
Move it around and.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
All right, treasurer, bank statement fees, Ms. Ellen?
Okay, so, People's United Bank, where we have all our accounts, um, last month, I think it was, sent out a letter that they are going to start, may start, because I just talked to the bank, uh, this afternoon, they may start charging three dollar fee for the hard copy in the mail, sending, sending, I get them, I print them offline, I go on because we don't get them until somewhere around the tenth of every month, I like my accounts balanced as soon as I can get the statement, so I print them offline, they're PDF, I can't change them, okay? Um, so, at three dollars a statement, every account's gonna get charged every month, three dollars a statement to get them in the mail. So, we didn't go paperless because that seemed to be an issue with, with other people. Many, many places, uh, on trust are at the Career Development Center, they're going completely paperless, um, with that, um, they can go on, I can go on. So if you don't have a problem with that, I'm gonna go paperless, if we, if you want to stay that way, then we're gonna pay three dollars a month per account. This could change, they, they've been talking about it, they don't wanna have to charge for statements. Um, the only time we really, the external auditors really like a closed bank statement on six-thirty, I can always switch it and just get the six-thirty closed statements. It's up to the board, if you wanna spend the money, you don't wanna spend the money if it happens, it's just, if it's going to for sure happen, I'm staying in touch with government banking in Burlington, I might work with, with them up there, um, they keep me very updated, and all I have to do is call and find out, and if so, then, you know, if they're going to have the fee, I wanna be, I wanna know if I'm supposed to go online and click the button to go paperless or not.
There's no, there's no legal obligation that we have to have the paper.
There is no legal obligation that we have to.
And even if we had it, we could even print it off, if, even if we want paperless, right?
Yeah, I print them every month.
Right.
I print them offline every month, we have the copies, I can get copies of any check anybody wants out of the general fund, cause all the checks come through the general fund.
Same on the file, on?
I have a file of each, in sep, a separate bank account, that's one more thing I'm gonna go choo-choo-choo about as soon as we finish this conversation.
Yeah, do you have it on your computer, I mean, as far as?
I don't save it on my computer, no.
The PDFs, file or whatever, okay?
No. I don't save any bank information, um, in case of, of hackers, yes.
But you, you create a, a hard file here?
I print it and we have our bank statements locked up. When they're reconciled and, and everything, they're locked up.
And just out of curiosity and satisfaction, what I have, if, if it were three dollars per statement fee, what are you talking, a month?
Um, and it would, I would assume, I'm assuming they're gonna take it out of each account.
Right.
Some of these counts are, some of these accounts are grants, so we're gonna be spending grant money on three dollar fee, just to let you know.
Yep, no, it's fine.
And that was gonna go with the whole next conversation.
Sorry, I jumped ahead and I didn't know.
Right, because, do I, right, I, I can't remember the exact account, I, I forgot to count how many accounts, let's say fifteen.
Okay.
Okay, forty-five dollars a month. Three dollars is an account roughly.
So it's fine.
There's a five dollar, they're gonna start charging five dollars for dormant accounts, but People's United sends out a notice that lets you know if you have a dormant account. We have two accounts that can go dormant, but I try to make sure I take a dollar out of one, a dollar out of the other, and redeposit it, cause you have to, you have to do a transaction once a year. So that's, that's what the town has always done, and, um, that is the timber sale fund and the, um, the revolving loan one, uh, P R H R L L.
Yes.
Pound, housing, something, I, I've lost it tonight, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, but there's two accounts that we don't use hardly ever, those two are the accounts that, that can go dormant, our general fund, our road fund, none of our grants, um, none of the smaller accounts, the implementation and rack one could go dormant, cause we haven't been using it, um, I would do the same thing there.
So you just need a motion to go paperless?
I just need a motion to go paperless if they actually are going to decide to charge, and I will let you know that they have made that decision, when, when that happens, finally happens.
I'll make a motion to allow Ellen to, allow our treasurer to go paperless, should, should they start charging bank fees for.
And it won't be completely paperless, I'll actually, I'll still be printing them off, I'm just gonna get them offline, they're not gonna mail them to us anymore.
Right.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I do, I do have one question as part of the discussion. So, when, when you say you have to close out for June thirtieth, for the, for the external auditors, would you get the bank statement directly from the bank for that, or would you provide them with?
I will be speaking to our auditors to find out if they need me to do that, and I'll let you guys know that also.
Well, just.
That's the one time they like to see the sealed ones, but now that banks are changing their rules.
So should we amend the motion, that was what I was.
I will come back, I'll come back and ask you, or you can do that.
But I didn't know if we should amend it now, so we didn't have to do it later.
That's even better. If, if need be, can I pay for the June thirtieth ones, is that what you're gonna ask?
Yeah, exactly, so, so we didn't have to do this in, in June, and that's all.
I'll amend that, I'll amend the motion to allow you to pay for the June thirtieth ones.
If need be.
If need be.
I'll second that. I just, I just don't wanna do it again in June.
Thank you for not making me come back in.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you, Ellen.
Just one quick thing, and you're, I don't know, you guys were looking at them this evening, the, the fund balance sheet, the expenditure report, revenue report, um, all those reports that I gave you that are all clipped together, I would love it if you guys took time at home sometime, looked them over, I wanna get together with the board, maybe we can have a work session, question and answers, anything you need a detailed printout of, explanation of, let's start out on the right foot and not wait six months and all of a sudden everybody's unsure what's going on, I would love to get together, I'll get you at that point in time, I will get you a list of all the bank accounts, I have them, I have to have them every year for the external audit, I have them on there now, you'll know exactly what our bank accounts, what are just running on the balance sheet within a fund, um, and any other thing that you wanna go over, the network system.
Okay.
Explain the fund balance sheet, how it actually works, cause it's a little different.
Yep.
Um, so if, if you guys can look that over and maybe get together and decide a time and check in with me, I, I would love to do that with you guys. Okay.
Just like start a half an hour earlier or something.
Yeah, just a learning curve, like an hour before a board meeting or whenever, a weekend, if you guys need to do that, whatever you need to do, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Green Mountain Race Track, I guess that's you, Mr. Michael?
Well, probably not just me.
Thanks, Ellen.
So, I have provided each one of you with some photographs of the racetrack property. I apologize to the general public, I.
Would you like mine?
Should've, um, made a couple more copies, Linda also has one. And this, this basically is in reference, or started kind of this past week, uh, as the zoning administrator, I got a phone call from a Mr. Sayers last Monday, it was last Monday, it was the second. He was inquiring about some permits, um, what he would need to do to have a fairly large-scale music festival at the racetrack property. Probably a fifteen to twenty-minute phone conversation with him, um, stating what I thought would have to be the process without actually looking anything up at the time. Um, you know, I explained some of the, some of the things that he would have to do, the railroad, you know, the, the exits, um, would have to come for a large gathering permit, um, you know, some different things, I'm not positive who would even apply for the permit, whether it would be him or, or the property owner, um, you know, these are all things that I explained to him at the time. Um, and then, and then in the Berkshire Eagle, it appears that, um, he.
They all but confirmed.
All but confirmed that they were all set at the Pono Racetrack property. Brian forwarded me a, I think it was a Facebook. Social media poster, whatever it was, last Saturday. It's like, whoa, wait a minute. So I took it upon myself to go to the racetrack, take some photos. The first picture is obviously, and, and the boundary lines are, property lines are on these photos. Your first, the first one is just the, the green on the far north. The green highlighted area is the north property line, which is also happens to be Gladbrook itself. It's labeled there. The yellow is, the yellow highlighted circle is a debris pile that was dumped on site. Don't quote me, I believe it was from Williams Town, maybe the college or, or school or whatever. Had a contractor go in, a local contractor, kinda gave me a ballpark idea that there's three thousand plus yards of debris, construction, concrete debris piled there. That, that is on the second page and the third page of your, of the photos, and the fourth page actually too. Of what those debris piles look like. The blue highlighted area, I'll give you a minute if you want, sorry. Okay. The blue highlighted area is the grandstand building itself. Which is, as everyone knows, is in some pretty serious.
Is it even safe?
No. Disrepair.
Absolutely not.
The back, I, I tried to take the aerial photo. On the west side of this building, you can see along the base of the building, there's a pretty significant amount of debris on the ground on that west side of the racetrack. The grandstand building itself.
Ninety-five percent of the windows are smashed out of it.
Yes.
Part of the roof has collapsed.
I didn't go around to the, to the east side. I didn't, the north side, you can see what's going on there. South side, same thing, you know, but I did not go around to the east side or, or the Route Seven side of the property to, to look at it. You know, the article and statements say that he's contacted Mr. Solar. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed, because I did take the initial phone call. And there's absolutely no way, shape, or form that I have said anything about, you know, you have the backing of the town, nothing. I, I explained to him what I thought the process was going to be. I think, in my opinion, if they're going to have some kind of festival down there and they go through the permitting process, I think we as a board, Harry and I, Jamie and I discussed this a little bit. I think we as a board can say and put some pretty serious stipulations, guidelines on this to clean up and.
I think it might be a good idea if we, we go down and look at it too, as a board.
Yeah, and that, I just, I just wanted to give you an overview. This was Jamie's idea. They had the photos, so, you know, it was a great idea. So we actually know kind of what we're looking at right here.
Right. Previously, Brian and I walked, did a walk-through down there.
At Joel Howard's recommendation.
Yep. He said, asked if we knew what was going on and didn't know if the town possibly would be open for liability. So after Brian and I walked down through the site, then we went over, saw the debris pile. We contacted Mike, we contacted Leo, our health officer, Mike, the zoning at the time, to take a stroll down because, and then assess the situation. They had the same consensus as we did as far as unsafe situation within the building and, and the dumping, possibly questionable illegal dumping there. They made contacts, attempted to contact the property owner with no return calls at all. And then when this article came out that he got the blessing from the property owner, that's kind of where we, but us as, Brian and I, when we went down there, we were looking out for the liability of the town, just we want them to take and somehow secure that building. Cause there's too many what-if situations right now. There's people in there riding motorcycles, four-wheelers. If one of them wipes out and shoots out the second or third story window that's not there.
There was also evidence of multiple fires having been lit inside.
They're having cookouts and that kind of stuff in there. But, I mean, we're gonna get a missing child phone call from somebody EMS or state police are. And we may end up finding a body down there unfortunately, because the kids been, there's, there's no way, nothing in place to stop anybody from entering the site. So, that's our main concern.
So for our action on the board, it's a, there's two different things we're talking about, it sounds like. One is the, is the festival that we don't have anything but a phone call on. There's been no application, so there's really nothing for us to do about that, just bringing everybody up to speed.
I, I just, right, that's all I wanted to do, Bob, was just bring, I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed and say, this is, this is what happened to, you know, because it's all over social media, it's been in the Berkshire Eagle. I just wanted to make it perfectly clear that under no way, shape, or form that I say, or I don't think any other town official, I, I think he's contacted, I think Mr. Sayers has contacted Linda. I think he's contacted Dorothy, sitting in as the town clerk, for some different things. Now.
But right now, it's just, they're just, he's just asking, all we have is some questions from him on what do I do? Or, or something along those, so there's nothing for us to do on that yet.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And then secondarily, what, Harry, what you're talking about is just the whole situation down there is, is completely apart from the festival. Is that the situation down there is we've got a dangerous situation that, that we, we maybe should take a look at and, and take some action on.
I agree.
Right. That's why we, they contacted Mike Azoni and Leo, who's the health officer. And they've attempted to take and make contact with the property owner. Because we don't wanna see somebody get hurt down there. I mean, if, if there's an entrapment, if somebody starts a campfire, the kids are, whomever is in there having a party or homeless persons in it, it's a catacomb down through, down to lower levels. If there's their fire, you're, you're putting our EMS people, firefighters and police officers all at risk to take and go in there and do a recovery, let alone a rescue.
So is our, is our action item to?
There is evidence that people have been living down there at different periods of time.
I mean, transients and stuff.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what, where we would stand on, on making anybody do, making the owner do anything on the internal part of the building.
Right, other than make.
But I, but that's, right, but we can make him secure the outside. I don't think we can say to him, okay, gotta clean the inside up. I don't think we have any, you know, this, and there again, it's in my opinion, I don't think we have any legal recourse. But I think to make him secure the outside of that building, whether he has someone come in and fence it completely off or, or whatever, but I think your idea of going down and making a site visit, so, you know.
I was thinking of that just to, just in, in, when I, when I said that, I was thinking about the, the, you know, if there was gonna be a music festival, we should go down and see what kind of dangerous situation we're looking at. But now it becomes even more, just given the, the situation regardless, without any regard to a music festival, it's just a dangerous situation.
I, I think, I think we, I almost think we should involve A and R on the, on the construction debris. That's in the flood zone, in the flood plain for sure, hundred percent. I, I'm sure, I know, I'm sure Ronnie's seen water down there. I know I have. I've seen water in the barn area. I mean, I grew up down there, so I know that that construction debris is definitely in the flood zone. So whether, you know, we probably should maybe even get A and R involved in that, coming down and looking at that.
Yeah, I think the state should look at that because that's, all that debris is on the riverbank.
Yeah.
And there's tons of it there.
Yeah.
Said what, three thousand?
I had a, I had a local contractor.
More than that.
And, and it was, you're right.
Rough estimate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking there's closer to a hundred thousand or more, believe it or not, because of the, I, I.
This was based off, yeah.
In the length and then the height of the piles and that's.
And maybe, maybe, maybe we're way off. I'm just, I, all I can tell you is, there's way more than, there's way more than what, there should be there for sure.
Tandem truck, the average tandem truck is twelve to fourteen yards.
So.
So, there's a lot of truck load.
And they've been in there, they, they have been in there crushing now, you know, I think, I think there's time.
They are trying to clean it up. That was the thought.
I don't, I, I don't know if they're trying to clean it up, Ronnie. I, I, obviously I don't wanna speak.
I see a truck coming down, it was a trailer too, not just a tandem. It was a dump trailer.
Yep.
It come down from Massachusetts. I see him pull in there and I followed him in. And that's what he had, a load of kind of debris.
He was dropping it off.
Debris from tearing down a building and the reins down there. And I says, well, who got the permit for that?
Right.
I mean, it isn't a dump. It wasn't a storage area.
That's right.
But then they said, well, they were gonna, it all went across TAM scale. That's another thing that puzzles me. So somebody got paid to take that, somebody got paid off and they're dumping it on, and without any, any type of permit or any kind of.
Well, no permit and it's on somebody else's, if, if it was TAM, it was dumped on somebody else's property.
Well, I don't know. Maybe the guy that owns the property had him bring it over there.
And possibly.
And weigh it and drop it in.
He hasn't contacted us back or any of our representatives to return their phone calls, so.
Right. But I mean, it's, I honestly believe that that's something that, well, should've been looked at quite a while ago.
Yes.
And it hasn't been. I mean, it's, and I'm sure that, the state was so concerned about a few trees in the river. I would, if they're filling up a lot of flood plain there with concrete debris, that's what that is.
Are you gonna call somebody to get them involved?
Well, I can call A and R.
Right. Yep. I, I, I would make a motion that Jamie call A and R and get they'll, get the Agency of Natural Resources down there to look at the site.
And just a, would the first step be to call, to call the owner?
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's the first, you gotta get in touch with the owner to, well.
Yes.
What made you think you could do this?
Well.
I know it's your property.
Right.
I don't know if it's legal to bring anything you want in on it.
How many, and, and how do we make that attempt? I guess we'd have to make it by certified letter. Because, because apparently a phone call has not worked or an attempted phone call.
That's right.
Right? I mean, that's before.
Before you took over, Mike, Leo had said that he had attempted multiple emails and phone calls and his next step was he was gonna do a certified letter, but I don't know if he did it yet.
I'll have to get a hold, I'll ask Leo what he's done and if he's heard anything further.
Well, I think, I think as a board.
I think we should do both. I think we should.
I think we should send a certified letter from a select board.
Absolutely. And then get the.
With a, with a return receipt.
Yes.
So that, so that we know that the owner has received that letter. And then in that letter, we would give him so many days, I guess, to respond back to us, right? And then, and then take action from there. But I, you're, you're right, Ronnie, take, go to the owner first.
Well, you go to the owner and you.
Give him a chance.
Then you also, you know, I don't know what, what the rule is on bringing stuff in. It's like that. I mean, that's foreign material. You're bringing it in and dumping it on the ground. You're opening up a dump.
That's right.
Far as I'm concerned.
And there's water.
And if he may, you know, I mean, it all went across the scales. That's the thing that.
And I'm sure he didn't do it out of the goodness of his heart.
No.
I'm sure he's getting some things. I'm sure.
But they said that, when I, I talked to, somebody was telling me about, he said, well, they were gonna, they were storing it there. And then they were gonna bring a machine in there, crush it all, and they were selling it. That I presume is probably perfectly legal, but I'd like to have an explanation. Are they gonna clean it up? You know, or what, what's the deal? I mean, I, I don't think you can tell a person what they can do with their property as long as it isn't interfering with someone else or interfering with a waterway or something like that. I mean, I believe in liberty, but I don't, I, I think there should be a plan there for something.
Well, yeah, if they're gonna start crushing, throwing dust up, the neighbors are gonna take.
Well, they've crossed. They've crossed.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying.
Right.
I think if we've learned anything that, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think, Mike, as zoning administrator, you should review the permit that was given to the track for the placement of the materials on the track property to begin with. To just see what the permit says, how long it was good for.
Seems exactly one present.
So they had a permit to put stuff there?
They had, they have some sort of.
Well, that's the first thing.
Something here.
We can do that.
Do you have any idea what year that would be? So it would save me a little bit of time?
Within the last five years.
Better than ten.
I would start five years back and work forward.
We could probably narrow it down.
I mean, I don't have a problem doing that. I just.
I thi, I think you should, should take a look and see what, what was required with the permit, if it ever went to DRB, that sort of thing.
I didn't even know a permit was issued.
Not me either.
So.
Something was discussed for the track.
Yeah, that's why it's always good to, to talk to them first to, just to make sure that, whoa, we understand what their position is. And maybe, maybe it is all perfectly legal. We, we don't know. And so I, let's not speculate. Let's just find out.
Too many I don't knows right now.
No, I agree. I mean, I just wanted to bring it down there. I, you know, first, that's, that was my line of thinking on, on getting this started with, you know, the large festival.
Yeah, as far as the festival goes, yeah.
So the motion is off the table and you're gonna check, right?
I'll check the permit.
Permit and come back to us with your answer, and then we can move from there? Does that sound good to everybody?
Well, it's, it's both check the permit and just see what's there, and also I think we still try to reach out to him, right?
Reach out to the owner.
We still try to connect with him and find out what his plans are and what he's doing.
Yeah, I think, I think Mike should check with what permit is on file at town hall and see what that says so that you know how to proceed with the letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the, for the construction debris, right? But it still doesn't, that still doesn't answer the question about the safety concern of the building.
Oh, it'll all be incorporated in your letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So, so do you, would you still wanna do the site visit? That's where I was going with that one. Would you still wanna do the site visit to look at the outside of the building or as, as the board? Or would, now, I, two of us have definitely seen it. Ronnie, I think, is aware of what's going on down there. I don't know if either of you two have been there to look at that building a little bit. You don't have to get out of your car. You can.
You can see it from the road.
Well, but you can drive around the backside. So, do, do you wanna do it as, would you wanna do it as a board, or would the two of you wanna just look at it and then come back? It doesn't matter. I, I'm just curious.
Well, the, the site visit, what I was thinking, on the site visit was, that's when we were talking about the music festival. Let's see how dangerous that was. Let's see if that moves forward first.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm curious. I would love to go down and look at it.
It's town, it's town road.
Go look at it.
The, the road is off, it's town road getting in on the south entrance.
So I think we can do that on our, we can do that on our own.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
Any further discussion?
Only, I'd like to say, one more comment is, we ought to find out, I mean, that building is, I ain't, I ain't been down there. Well, I followed that truck in there, that's the last time, but I didn't really look the building over, but I did see there was some broken windows and stuff. Now, we probably ought to as a, as a town, find out what power we have as far as forcing somebody to, to close, to, to secure building.
As far as.
So it isn't.
It's condemned right now, basically.
Well, condemned can be one thing, but I mean, you gotta have it so that people can't go in and out.
Well, I, I don't know that. That's what I'm saying.
I don't know.
It hasn't been condemned by the town.
It hasn't been condemned by the town.
I don't even know if we gotta, what kind of policies we have to follow. But I mean, you were just saying how dangerous it was. We're gonna go down looking for dead bodies and everything.
Well, that's, that's.
I, I think it should be secured somehow or another, even if it was a chain link fence or.
And I'm giving you the worst case scenario of.
But I could see kids going down there, even teenagers going down there and horsing around and following through.
It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
We had the same problem with the cannery building.
Yes.
Many years ago.
The town had them boarded up to secure the entrances.
Is that something we'd have to check with the lawyer on, what our power would be to do that? To go in and make somebody secure that?
Maybe over at Vegas City, the towns are gonna be able to tell us something.
Yep.
They must have other buildings around that are, that are not secured.
What's the place to start, right?
I think it starts also with your health officer.
Well, that's why we sent him down there.
Get a report from him.
Every night.
Put him on the next agenda, meeting agenda.
I think he was planning on being here tonight, but like Mike said, the coronavirus training is at.
Yeah, he was at that all day. He stopped in and let us know about the, his concerns as far as the lead paint and all that stuff on the town hall real quick before he headed.
Okay, so health officer, Mike's on check on the permits before we can even do a letter to the owner, correct?
Yeah, that way we have our ducks in the hole. I agree with that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any public comments? The motion?
I get a couple things. Quick, quickly though.
Okay.
I mean, I was in here earlier today, talking with Linda and Ellen. Right now, with, with the coronavirus scare, whatever you wanna call it, they're in here cleaning and wiping stuff down themselves. Is that something that we should have done, not have our office staff doing? Is that something that we should have done, not have our office staff doing? Um, kind of just food for thought. Um, and should we plan and be proactive? If we couldn't have meetings like this, should we plan now and be proactive on how to make, or how to keep the town itself functioning on a daily basis, account, you know, pay our help? You know, accounts receivable, accounts payable type thing? Should we do that now? In, in case somebody says tomorrow, we can't, uh, yeah, you're done, the town, the town office is closed or whatever. You know, and I, I don't, this is just something that came up today, I don't have the answers, just throwing it out there.
On Monday, Ellen and I both came in on the same page that we need to have a contingency plan in place to figure out how to protect the office staff as well as to keep the town operating and what are the basic things that we would need to do. And we somewhat have a plan, even if it's to limit, um, come in on shifts, to come in, like, I, I know that I need to make sure that the people get paid, the bills get paid. Ellen has to do the financing, even if we have to arrange it so that someone comes in certain hours and there's no one else in the building. Um, we have a window right there if we need to, if we have to-
We can do a pass.
Maybe exchange some paperwork. Um, I think the board should put on another town website, something from the board asking the public to only use the town office for essential business only, to try to avoid coming. How much can we handle through email or telephone or some other way, depending on what the need is?
Yeah, that-
So we've all been thinking about it and we've all been trying to be really safe and trying to be aware of who's in the building and to wash down and all the hard surfaces. The health officer was very helpful to get us some supplies because we noticed when we went to start stocking up on disinfectant and we couldn't get this and we couldn't get that and, okay, so this is where your health officer came in to help us to, to get us certain supplies so that we could, you know, start washing down every day, everybody's workstation. We're doing it twice a day. We're trying really hard to protect ourselves and the public.
Rebecca wants to-
Oh, I'm sorry, wait till you're done, I just wanted to add that also, if you, for meeting, for the select board, there are technologies that are basically free, like Zoom, where you guys could meet remotely and the meeting can be recorded, so it can still be shared with the public.
Still have to have-
I just thought of that when you were all speaking about that. I, I've used it for like educational platforms, like to have a, you can get up to like thirty people in there. You could also have, say, say you have Ellen come in and she has a piece of the agenda item, she can come in for that part of it.
Right, I, I just-
It's called Zoom and that's, that's a really good one, I'm sure there are other ones as well, but those can, those are, they can be recorded and then presented to the public.
I mean, you can put the links on the, on the website.
The links on the website too, yeah.
And it can be recorded sessions, you could do that with Zoom, you could do it with WebEx, you could do it with Teams.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Because right now, this is Facebook Live and Cat TV, so.
Right, I'm just, I'm just concerned, you know, within the general discussion today, I'm just concerned that they say, okay, like, all the town buildings are shut down, we still have to-
Function.
We have function, absolutely.
That's right, you know, our road crew has to get paid, you know, whatever's going on.
So I've called in the, the extra laptop because it already has the number installed on it.
Yeah, I had it, so I returned that today.
So she returned that.
Right, so I mean, I, do we, is there some action that we should take as a board?
There should be board of health advisories of what to do.
No, we got them posted, they're around.
Right, but I'm talking about-
Yeah, but there's, there's-
Keeping the town functioning.
I, I understand that, but part of that is, um, on that advisory, you can hand somebody the copy of it. Say, please, if they want to enter the build, before they enter the building, you ask them to read it. If they, if they've been asymptomatic on anything, um, then you just ask them what they're looking for. That they, you know, because you're asympti-, you've got a fever, you're not gonna come in the building.
If anybody's sick, don't come in the building, I don't care if you have a fever or not, stay home.
Exactly.
Part of the problem though is that-
I'm talking about the public.
This virus, that it's contagious when you're not sick.
No, I know, exactly.
Right, so the, once, once you become sick, it's too late. I'm, I'm just, I'm, because, because look at, if somebody comes in, if somebody wants to come into the building and you hand them that sheet and they really want, and they really want to come into the building and, and talk to Wendy over a Lister thing, have, have you been here, there and everywhere and whatever? Nope, nope.
I understand.
You're, you're hoping that somebody's gonna be honest about it, hopefully they are, I'm just saying. And that's, and that's all well and good. I'm worried about, and I think that's what Linda was worried about, is if they say, okay.
Could we restrict the hours? Would that be feasible? Like you guys would all come in here and work, but restrict the hours to the public?
To, I think, start restricting hours. I, we have somewhat of a contingency plan in place. We just want the board to know that we, we're thinking along these lines, we've got some things figured out.
Okay.
And we're just, we're gonna play it day by day until somebody gets sick, somebody obviously in the office gets sick, we're gonna shut down, we're not gonna have a choice.
So.
Um, that's why I'm saying I have a laptop that I could possibly work from home. Ellen has one.
What, there's certain documents that aren't supposed to leave here. So how does that work? Does the board have to give you authorization to take them and have a secure, like if we had to move a, move a lockbox or a locking file cabinet with it? I mean, that, I guess that's part of what he's asking.
I don't need to bring any documents home with me, other than my, what I'm gonna pay or payroll.
So, so I'm gonna ask you then, Linda, part, your contingency plan that you guys sort of have in place, what, what does that entail? And don't be, you know, you can be pretty, pretty brief, which is totally fine. And-
I've already pretty much stated that we've already discussed.
And if you need any board action-
When we need board action, you're gonna know, because we're gonna ask.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's-
You know, and that's, that's gonna be, contact the chairman, tell him what the problem is and then we'll take it from there.
Okay.
So if I understood correctly, we have a, you, you have a contingency plan, you've been talking through that. The only action items that I think are on the table are maybe put something on the website to ask people to be careful. If you can do it by phone, do it by phone.
I mean, banks are doing it, everybody's doing it, so we should be doing it as well.
With all the publicity that's been out there, I can't see why the public wouldn't, would want to be here anyway. Only as much, as little as possible.
Correct.
And handle it over the phone or by email or something like that. I mean, like a, Tom Kirk has to be here to look up records and things like that.
There's documents that have to come to the office for the recording, et cetera.
Title searches.
But you don't need a circus of people here, you know, and I think people understand that. You, you, you go down to the stores, there's nobody parked at the stores.
No.
So I think people are getting kind of paranoid, right?
The drop box that was on that door has been moved to the front door for payments, papers that maybe might need to be dropped off.
So should we put up, should we put a notice on the front door that said, before you enter the building? Uh, and maybe there's one out there, I don't know, I didn't look today. Before you enter the building, if your business can be handled by phone or email, we would prefer-
We should, we should post something to that.
Do you need a motion from us to hook that?
No, we really need that, we just need to have an understanding that we're all on the same page that we want to protect the, the public as well as our staff.
Yes, I think you should post it immediately, tomorrow morning ASAP.
Like I said, we will play it by ear, we're all, I don't know what you want to do about the disinfectant of the office. It is time consuming and I'm trying to do it and, and to just like not know really how many people were at a meeting last night, where they all, what rooms they were all in and that kind of stuff, so, that's a, that's a concern.
Yeah.
I can come up every day after work and do it for you, if you'd like.
I mean, I'm trying, Ellen's trying.
No, they were, they're right, they asked me about a meeting last night and I said, well, there was, I said, there was probably like ten people here last night.
Okay, that's good to know, let's start washing the table. I did this table before your meeting tonight, I did this table again.
Like doors and handles and back chairs and-
Yes.
Biggest thing is in between walk, if you're in the process of doing something, you walk by a bathroom, stop washing hands.
I have a note right over there posted for everybody to please be conscientious about cleaning your workstation before you leave.
Yep.
There's three that share that one there, there's a couple over here, I mean, we just, it's what we have to do. Enough said on that.
Okay, any other discussion?
The only, are you still on public comment or going with them?
I have something, nobody has said it and I will say it. Congratulations on becoming the first woman chairman of the panel of select board, Angie.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have made history.
Oh, boy. I would say. Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you to everybody that voted for me, I will do my best, I'm sure. I just want to make it calm, respectful and move forward and get work done.
I hope and pray that this board has an easier time this coming year.
And I am so sorry for all the grief that you had, that was horrible.
It wasn't that bad.
Mike, were you done?
The only other public comment was, um, last night Brian went to the EDC and there again, I'm speaking for Shannon because she's not here, expressing interest to become, to become a member of the Economic Bellemet Committee. Um, and, um, we appoint the EDC members and they have an opening on the EDC Board. So Brian would bring them up to seven members.
I was gonna ask to be placed on the agenda tonight for it, but you guys have enough on your plate? I was gonna, I was gonna wait till the next meeting if Shannon doesn't already do it. But I did send a letter of interest in at that time to Harry, Bob and Linda because the three of you hadn't yet taken your oath and gotten your email set up.
I still don't have my email set up, it's all funky.
Oh, oh, I, I was under the impression you had.
No, it's all scripted, I brought it to Linda, I have to get ahold of Chuck, but I haven't done that yet.
That seems to be normal at the start of every new board.
Okay.
We all had trouble last year too.
I finally figured my head out.
Okay, anything else?
So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Brian to the EDC Board.
Well, that-
Well, it wasn't on the agenda.
We can't do it on a public comment?
No, because it's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, next week I was scheduling a special meeting for appointments. They've been posted, all the openings have been posted, that, that we have openings.
Okay.
So I wanted to have a special meeting next week.
Thursday.
On Thursday, 7:00 PM, just for a very limited agenda.
Okay.
Specifically for, um, appointments and any necessary business that comes up during the week that the board may need to address, how's that?
Sounds good to me.
And then the following meeting for the end of the month, we will be at the treatment plant at 6:00 PM for the budget.
So a special meeting for, uh, committee appointments.
Well, it's not just committee, you're gonna have like fence viewer, that kind of stuff, tree warden. It's all the stuff that we did last year at our second meeting.
Selectmen appointments. Twenty twenty selectmen appointments.
And I'm assuming Dave Duns will hold half those positions again.
He was appointed member of the motion was beginning this year, that the, those particular positions would become a three-year.
Yep.
So we wouldn't have to keep doing it.
Anything else? Entertainer motion to adjourn?
We, we have executive session.
If necessary.
If necessary.
It's necessary.
Okay, motion to go on executive session?
I'll second, I think we need to say why, it's personnel, correct?
To personnel matters.
All right, to personnel matters, executive session.
Are you taking action after? Do I need to stay or are you coming back?
We, we have to come back in the regular meeting to adjourn.
Yeah, but he doesn't have to stay for that unless we're gonna take an action, unless we're taking some action.
If we don't take an action, you don't have to stay.
I would like to point out, if he stays and it's past nine o'clock, you're paying fifty dollars an hour.
You don't have to stay.
No, I have to stay, thank you.
I, I guess there's action taken.
There's no action taken, right Linda?
No.
I have to stay if there's action taken.
Second that.
Jamie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.